Hi, Joe.
Evening, Tony.
How are you?
Having fun.
Weather's warming up.
I'll be out on the boat on Thursday.
Tomorrow?
Sure, been in the water for over a week now.
Are you lobstering?
Nobody can lobster until the whales are in Maine.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You see any whales out there?
Oh, yeah, sir, I'm from the wharf yesterday. If you looked out towards grave light. Others have seen him down on marginal road.
What's that?
Others have seen him over marginal by Egg Rock.
Hey, Josh.
You're muted, Josh.
Now I'm not. Hey, everyone.
Got some of the finance committee books got delivered to the town hall today. Josh. Can you hear me, Josh? So lost his audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I had to plug in my external speaker laptop.
Just saying, some of the finance committee books. The extra ones that we purchased for the town hall for the day of the town meeting got delivered today. They came out good, so they go in the mail tomorrow, I guess, to be sent out to residents.
Hi, Gene.
Hello. All right.
Having a good night.
That's a good thing. It always helps. Nobody else wants to talk.
Oh, they were talking.
How's it going, Gene?
Good. How are you?
Good, good.
How are you? Anybody got a yellow magic marker?
I have one.
I have a couple.
It is 6:30, so the board of selectmen meeting for Wednesday, April 4th, 2022, is now in session. First item on the agenda is coronavirus update. I don't see Dever John Kuan on the phone. I could read the statistics, however, from, sent over from health nurse Deb Murphy. Total case count cumulative is 622. Total PCR tests, 18,970 PCR tests in the last two weeks. 243, that's from April 3rd to April 16th. Total positive is 25. Out of that 243, the 14-day positivity rate in the hot is 10.29%. 14-day positivity rate in Massachusetts is 5.04%. And we currently have had 36 cases in April. We also still have at-home COVID tests available at town hall and the library. Residents can pick them up during regular business hours. And unless Tony you had anything additional, I guess that's it on the COVID-19.
She just sent me like a half an hour ago the, some updated info from April 17th to April 30th. There's 258 tests and 27 positive. And so far in May, there's been six positive cases. And as Deb would say, you know, that doesn't include those at-home tests. Those are PCR's that she gets notified of. Or if somebody tests positive on a home test and calls one of our health nurses, she'll add that in too, so. I'm comparing. Did you, did you, you mentioned the comparison of last April versus April?
I did not.
All right, so last April of 2021, there were six cases compared to this April 36. So obviously, you know, with the masks, with masks coming off and the latest variant being more contagious, but less symptomatic in some cases. It seems to be that we're experiencing more positive cases compared to this time last year.
Yeah, and as I pointed out, there's, there's certainly some number of unreported cases, people that take the at-home tests. I just, I would encourage people to pick up these at-home tests from the town hall and the library because they're no good if nobody uses them and they're, they're sitting there. How many do you think you have left there, Tony?
Plenty, plenty. Come on up and grab them as many as you like. And they, and they extended the expiration date an extra three months. So the box says April 2022, but they sent us a extended expiration date to July 2022.
All right. Good news. All right, I guess we can move on to opening comments. Before I make these announcements, I'd just like to say it's been my honor serving as selectman on this board for the past three years and grateful for the voters for giving me a chance to do it for another three years. Been sworn in by the town clerk. And I want to say it's been my pleasure serving with you, Selectman Collin and Selectman Canty. I appreciate the fact that we're all pulling together and there's no, there's no bravado and no self-aggrandizement, just, just three people doing the best they can for the town. So looking forward to another three years and we're gonna, I'm sure it's gonna be a busy three years, so. With that, let's get to it.
And I would say, Josh, I would say back at you.
Thank you, Gene.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, spring boat launch, Jocelyn Marine will be at the wharf on May 14th. To launch the boats, reservations should be made one week in advance by calling Jocelyn Marine at 978-462-9717. Owners can launch earlier if the boat is accessible. 2022 resident parking stickers are available for purchase at not.org. The stickers are $10 each. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town and a census must be completed. Compost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 2022 resident sticker is required. Visit the Public Works Department page at not.org for accepted materials. Curbside leaf pickup will be offered on the following Mondays, May 9th, May 23rd. Leaves must be in a biodegradable bag only, no plastic bags. Leaves must be at your curb by 7:00 a.m. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs and computers is the last Saturday of each month from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon behind the DPW garage on Flash Road. 2022 resident sticker is required, certain fees may apply. Visit the Public Works Department page at not.org for accepted materials. Town-owned land study committee, there's a vacancy. I'll say we're quite eager to get this vacancy filled because there's some important work for this committee to do. So if you're interested, please send letters of interest to kaytaylor@not.org. That's K-T-A-Y-L-O-R at not.org.
Hey, Josh, I'm sure people are wondering, what does the town-owned land study committee do?
It makes recommendations of what to do with town-owned land, so.
Specifically triggered when we have town-owned land authorized for sale by town meeting. So we have two town-owned land properties. One is a small sliver of the front corner of residence steps that on paper seem to extend onto the street, but they, but it doesn't in actual real life, so just a fixing of a deed issue there. Then the other one is the Coast Guard housing property.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a questionnaire, a list of questions. Questionnaire, a list of questions that the town-owned land study committee goes through to. As part of their process and what they, basically, the bulk of it is that they're looking at, you know, comps. What's the square footage? On the, on the open retail market is for, for these. Different properties and like, for instance, the. Coast Guard Housing property, you know, it'll be looking at what is the, what's the comparison market for open land? Up for sale in the current market. And so they'll give a recommendation to the board of selectmen as to what those, what to expect during a procurement process. And I'm looking through by email because I know Dan Script sent me a copy of that, of that list of questions not that long ago.
Yeah, I can dig it out again and send it to me.
All right, thanks for that explanation, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Also, we'd like to take a moment to pay our respects and acknowledge the passing of, of long-term resident and former con employee, Arthur Barretta. And offer our condolences to the Barretta family and his son, the fire captain Robbie Barretta. Sad news. Those are all the announcements I have. Gene or Mark, do you have anything additional to add?
No.
I just want to thank the, for Tony and Tom Clark for running a smooth election on, on Saturday. And thank all the town residents who showed up, even though there were no contested races, we have almost three hundred people coming vote, so that's, that's nice. Congratulate you, Josh, in your reelection. I also wanted to mention that I know Arthur Barretta spent a lot of time working at the Council on Aging. So he will be missed, so. That's it.
Thanks. All right. We have a National Grid public hearing. And I see there's a National Grid rep on the phone. Do we have a motion to open that hearing?
I believe that the board of select would open the National Grid public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing team, none, we'll, we'll call vote.
Gene Canty, aye.
Rock, roll, aye.
Josh, Andrew, my. Oh, maybe this is our, I guess we can have the discussion after this next motion, right? So the hearing is now open. We have another motion.
I move that the, that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the petitions submitted by National Grid to excavate the public highways into iron and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Said underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Ocean Street, the hot mass, oh, one nine oh eight. About is number four, number five, and number seven, Ocean Street. We're given notice, we're given due notice of this hearing by a certified mail. And the hearing notice was published in the newspaper, the Daily Island.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I think we could probably start by inviting the National Grid representative to briefly. Provide a brief overview of the project.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Good evening, my name's Adelah Headnabat, I'm with National Grid at one seventy Metford Street in Malden. I am here on behalf of a customer at Seven Ocean Street. Who is requesting to have their service be placed on the ground rather than have a service drop overhead. A pole is right fairly in front of their property and which is the about five feet of conduit will be installed. It would be a one, three-inch conduit from the existing pole to their property.
All right, and in the petition, there's a little map showing that. I believe that's the house that's currently being renovated.
That is correct.
All right.
How does that, how does that work? Is that by request? Is there any payment for that?
So we, typically, a job like this, this is what we call a customer-driven job. It is for the customer, it is by the customer. We, National Grid petition on behalf of the customer to have conduits in the public way. Once the petition is approved, the customer is required to have a permit from the city to open up the road. So they can have the, the, the work done in the public way.
Oh, thank you.
I see Esther Johnson has her hand up. Esther, do you want to unmute yourself and provide any comments? You're still muted.
Yeah.
So name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just had a couple of questions where this is so close to my house. I would be interested in also, and I understand I'd have to hire my own electrician and get a, a separate work order from National Grid to actually have the overhead wires that go into my home, which is so close to do this. And I understand there's a cost involved, but. What I was hoping to do is perhaps be able to remove the telephone pole. If my house, the, was under, the wires were underground and Seven Ocean Street is underground. I know John Collins across the street, he would, this all depends on costs too. He might be interested too, so. I, I just, I just don't understand the process a little bit. Is it possible to do it at this time? It seems like for me, the time would be the time to do it when it's, you know, you're doing it at Seven Ocean Street. So I wanted to coordinate, see if the town is amenable to this. I don't know what it involves, but I just would be interested.
Maybe we can start with the National Grid representative describing the process. That makes sense?
It is a fairly straightforward process. She has mentioned every detail of it. It is put in, in a work request and a, an engineer will, will be working with you to investigate the possibility of having this service, your service be placed on the ground. I personally don't see an issue. You do have the pole right in front of your property, which you could siphon up to. However, removing a pole, that's something that you have to take into consideration. It's not just National Grid that's on a pole. Usually the telephone are also on that pole. The city, the fire line is also on that pole. So it's not as fairly easy as having the service drop be underground. Removing a pole can be typical difficult, it is possible. But i- it can be difficult. Maybe relocating the pole is ideally the way to go about it. Ocean Street, the, the island that is housing to seven and five, and I believe another property on there is, is a large island, so removing that pole would be really tough. But like I said, you know, if a study needs to be done, then we will be happy to work with you. But work requests will need to be generated first.
Okay.
Trying to remember, I just, actually just drove by there before the meeting to look at. The, the overhead wires. I'm trying to remember that, that pole, I think it, does it connect into poles running down Willow Road? Or does it dead end at, at the corner?
It, it, it does, it does, it does, and unfortunately it goes from Willow to Ocean and it continues on up the road as well.
So it seems like if to remove the pole would require sort of that, the entire. Well, I suppose you could have one section of underground utility, but it's a little bit awkward, right?
Right, it's, it's difficult because. What we refer to as a service line, it can be as simple as putting a conduit, but when it becomes multiple customers, then it's a crib and a crib is required to have a transformer, so you can't really. On, on the ground, a, a small section and have everything overhead, so everything has to be overhead. To for it, to go underground, we will need to install a manhole and that's just overkilling it for a small section.
How, how long does it take to process? So for example, Ms. Johnson wanted to put in her own work order, how long does it take to process those?
As soon as, as soon as she gets a, a work request, an engineer is usually assigned to it. I can, I can give you my phone number right away, so when you put that work request, you can give me a call and I'll, I'll be happy to be working with you. I'll be the engineer handling the service if you'd like.
Okay.
I don't mind giving it to you right now if you have a pen.
I do, I do, yeah.
Okay, it's seven eight one. Seven nine five. Five seven three three. And this is my cell phone, you can, you can call me, I'll be happy to work with you on it.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, I guess my. My, my question is maybe, what's the purpose of me doing this if the telephone pole is not going to come down? It's, that's what, that was the end result. That's would be my end result, but it doesn't sound like that's going to happen. Am I, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so can, can I ask a, a simple question? What would be the benefits of me putting this underground? Just because I know it's fairly close to my house, it's just. I mean, we had a hurricane and, and the, the electricity that whatever it connects to, it seems like. Now, it would just be this pole, so it, it, does it give, does it give me that much benefit by spending the money and doing this, I guess? So it's, go ahead.
I, I, so aesthetically looking, people like to put their service as an underground. But keep in mind that, that service drop that's coming to your house right now, that's a National Grid-owned. While if it was an underground, it will be your own cable, so you have more control on that side. But as far as if a hurricane comes and knocks down a pole, would you still have power? The answer to that is, is no, even if you do have a service that is underground.
Okay, all right.
The service drops down from the pole that's in the center of the picture we're looking at now, right? If you, if Esther went underground, so if the, that pole fell or some other pole fell, that's the supply to an underground utility.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, it's mostly aesthetic.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, and, and it, it, it is pricey. I mean, and we've had customers who've spent thousands and thousands of dollars because they didn't want that cable going across a window or going over their roof or some sort of a walkway, and they prefer that if it would be run underground because it's a lot safer. Wind can knock off service drops, but we typically like to keep ours tight, so they don't do that. But do customers do appreciate having the leverage of having their own wire running up to the pole?
Okay. Oh, thank you, I, I appreciate your, the information. It sounds like I probably am not going to do it. Obviously, the pole cannot come down, but I thank you for listening to my request. And I also, can I just close? I wanted to thank Kristen and KK and your, and Miss Luckman's office and the other office, they were terrific. But I had a couple of questions last week, so I just appreciate their helping me, okay? Thank you.
Esther, I just wanted to mention, this is Mark.
Yeah.
Your house is so beautiful and historic, and I'm so glad to see number seven being historically preserved. It looks beautiful.
Yes, it does, I, they're doing a great job and Adele and Jeff asked me a couple of years, you know, when they started doing, doing it. I just said, you know, it's your property, you can do what you want with it, but I, I love what our houses look like. So I think maybe they listened to me a little bit, you know, so yeah, I, thank you.
What are the styles of those houses, Esther?
It's a man, a mansard roof. I don't know, it's, I think it's late eighteen hundreds. I don't know, but I love the looks of the houses, so when they're doing a beautiful job, you know, it's finally coming along. It's a little slow, but they're, they're coming along, so.
Your house looks beautiful also, so.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, I'm happy with it. I think the colors are the original colors of the house. It was either the white with, with the green trim or I had white with black trim, but I don't know, but thanks. I appreciate you listening to me, I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but thank you.
Esther, before you jump up, do you have any?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any comments in favor or against the proposal?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it, I have no issues with it. I just was hoping that maybe that pole would come down. Sometime in the future, if the town ever does it, it would be nice for some of us to get these telephone poles down. But I know that's not a priority in, in the town's best interests at this point, so, thank you.
Thanks for the input, Esther.
Yes.
Any other comments? I have no comments and I have no opposition to the. Change. All right, any other, no discussion? All right then, we can vote. We'll call vote, please.
Gene Canty, aye.
Rock, roll, aye.
Josh Andrew, my. Now we can close the National Grid public hearing.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to close the National Grid public hearing.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Gene Canty, aye.
Rock, roll, aye.
Josh Andrew, my. All right, we got to new business.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a, a vote on the Clean Water Trust borrowing. Someone has to read that whole thing.
I'll volunteer to read it.
All right.
It's a long one, and then at the end, well, any of you can just say, so moved.
Thanks.
So bear with me, everyone.
Yeah.
I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Nahat, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following vote was passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted one, that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed nine million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. The bonds pursuant to chapters twenty-nine C and forty-four of the general laws, of which two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two is under a vote of the town passed April twenty, twenty eighteen, Article twenty-three, which authorized a total borrowing of four million, ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. Four million, six hundred thousand is under a vote of the tax September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, Article fourteen, as validated by chapter forty-five of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, which authorized a total borrowing of four million, six hundred thousand. And three million dollars is under a vote of the town passed September twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, Article one, which has a total borrowing of three million dollars for the construction of sewers. And other pools should control facilities identified in such votes, the project. Two, in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the notes from time to time in aggregate principal amount not to exceed nine million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Three, that each bond shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust at a price determined pursuant to the financial agreement. Four, that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate and the principal maturities of each bond and note and to execute a. Maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust. With respect to the sale of the bonds and notes, such date, form, and then maturities and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes. To be approved by a majority of the Board of Selectmen and the treasurer and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. Five. That any certificates or documents related to each bond and note collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts. Each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file. Or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto. Having the same legal effect as original signatures. Six, that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan. Commitment or agreement by the treasurer are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. And seven, that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials are hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient. To carry out the provisions of this note, including execution and delivery of the financing agreement and the project regulatory agreement relating to the project. I further certify that the vote was adopted at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda of the meeting. Which agenda included the adoption of the above vote was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public. At all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with. An alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General is set forth in nine forty CMR twenty nine point oh three. To be. At least forty eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting. And remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session. And that the official record of the meeting was made available to the public promptly and remains available to the public, all in accordance with general law, chapter thirty. A sections eighteen through twenty five, as amended. I further certify that the vote has not been amended, supplemented, or revoked, and remains in effect on this date, dated May fourth, twenty twenty two.
Oh moved. Second. Good job, Tony. Um, discussion, yeah, so um. Tony, if you've, if you still have the voice for it, um, can you? Explain this uh Clean Water Trust borrowing?
Yes. In. Twenty eighteen. The town, in the town meeting of uh April twenty eight, twenty eighteen, Article twenty three, the town approved. A general borrowing of four million dollars, not four million, ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. Since then, we've had two separate votes at two separate meetings that authorized funding through the Clean Water Trust. The sewer revolving fund, it's a long term, low interest um borrowing mechanism. That can be used for sewer projects. When we uh, when we received the. Bids and the awarding bid for the Linway job, and it exceeded the amount authorized. Uh through town meeting of those later two articles. Uh, the total project is around nine million, and we had around seven million approved by town meeting to go through this sewer revolving fund. The sewer, the DEP approved us for the entirety, the entire cost of the Linway job, nine million dollars. So. We, there's about two million dollars there that we didn't think we had authorization by town meeting. To use. Uh sewer revolving fund money to pay for the project. However, working with DEP, we were able to work with them to allow for the twenty eighteen vote that we. Did in April twenty eighth of twenty eighteen, that was for the four point oh nine million. And we told them how much we had as a balance, it covers the the remain, the difference. Um, and they allow, they're allowing us to use that vote as authorized. To be uh to go through the sewer revolving fund, so essentially now. We're able to. Um, put the entire cost of the Linway job through the SRF program. Use the balance of that four million dollars from twenty eighteen towards the project and towards the payment of this bond. And then we're going, this is what, one of the uh articles at the upcoming town meeting where we were talking about. Needing to borrow twenty million, now we only have to ask for eighteen, because we're utilizing that previous authorization. So it's uh ultimately, it's, it's a good thing for the town. And uh, it works out to be a better interest rate than the original twenty eighteen borrowing.
So, so it, in summary, it's it's a consolidation of previously approved. Um, spending, previously approved at annual town meeting spendings uh into. A single low interest loan, so there is no new, just to be clear, there's no new debt being incurred here, there is. Consolidate consolidating previously approved at town meeting.
Correct, correct, and not only is there no new debt here, but it actually helps us. Not in, not ask for. Um, as much additional, you know, borrowing authorization at the upcoming town meeting.
Right.
So um, just to make. Uh, be clear here, th- these bonds, bonds are being issued through the the trust, which is the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, right?
Correct.
So the town is not going out in the market uh with these bonds, um, the the trust is, correct? And they have the, they have the interest rates.
Correct, but in the twenty eighteen, that that twenty eighteen borrowing of four point oh nine. The town actually uh performed that borrowing on its own. Now, SRF is allowing us to use that authorization. To approve SRF, so essentially what we'll do is. We'll be able to use those funds to pay invoices as the project uh works its way, you know, through. Um, its progression to complete. And at the end of the project, we'll be issued a long term low interest bond through SRF. And right out of the gate, will be reimbursed the the funds that we paid, all those invoices, and we can use the those funds to pay down that bond. So, um, we're actually eliminating a higher interest rate from the previous borrowing that was done in twenty eighteen. And kind of shifting it into the long term low interest um SRF bond. And paying down about two million dollars right, right away.
Yeah, so, so we, uh, the town initially uh issued the bond, correct, at a, at a certain interest rate? Uh, and now we go through the trust, that interest rate will be lower. So does a trust pick up the difference of that? How does that work?
Yeah, I I really asked that question, um. I thi- I believe the answer is yes, Mark, I'll have to double check with what they responded to us, cuz I had asked that, you know, we've already. We've already accrued some interest on the borrowing, cuz it was done in twenty eighteen.
Right. Uh, so Brendan, I see Brendan on, Tony?
He is.
Yeah, well, if he knows.
Brendan, are you, uh?
I am on.
Hi Brendan.
Hi, sorry, um. Yeah, uh, I don't actually know the answer to that question off the top of my head, um. But it's, it's certainly something that we can look into, um, I I don't have, yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a good question, I I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Okay, alright, as long as we pay the lowest interest rate.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, great, thanks Brendan.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
It's just Ju- Josh, maybe I missed this, but. Uh, if we approve this, does that fix the interest rate?
Yeah, approving this allows us, this is, this vote is required so that we can um. Issue the long term bond through SRF. And the long term bond is a fixed thirty year interest rate.
Uh, that rate is not specified in the, in this motion here though, right?
No.
Yeah.
Cuz right now we have short term borrowing of that low amount, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. Right. Okay, I got it, thank you.
Um, any other discussion? Um, hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean, can't the eye?
Rock, roll, light.
Josh, enter mine. Uh, next item on the agenda is ongoing business, and the first item there is the twenty twenty. To town administrator goals, um. Um, this is not a vote, but um, just to provide some background on this, um, so. Um, we set goals for the town administrator every year, starting last year. And the way this process worked is um. Each selectman created. Um, a list of goals for the town administrator and Tony created. Uh, some suggested goals for himself, and I took those four inputs and. Um, sort of eliminated um the overlaps and so on, kind of wordsmith it. Um, so I think we should consider this list of goals as as a draft, and uh and we could look at it. Um, I didn't. Feel like um. It was my role to eliminate anyone's inputs, I did wordsmithing, but I did not. Um, weed out anyone's uh goals, so um, with that. We can uh look at them, I guess, and. And. Read through them and um, see what editing, I don't know if we should try to edit on the fly, or you could give me general select. Uh, general comments and um, I can. Edit them following those comments. Uh, open the document.
Looking forward to.
Yeah, um, if you want, I can just read through them, and then we can come back to anything. Anyone has comments or suggestions on?
Would would it be worth it at all to uh? Go through these individually like we did. Prior year?
Um, not sure what you mean exactly.
Well, we we broke it down prior year um, by different categories.
Yeah, I I um, I don't know, Gene, if you, I emailed these out um, just a couple hours ago, maybe you haven't seen them yet.
But um. I have not seen them.
Okay, so Tony's sharing them, um, so again, additional background. Last year, we kind of categorized these into four major categories, and we kept those same four categories again. Which are budget and finances, communication, general government administration and infrastructure. And I actually changed that infrastructure one to, last year was just infrastructure, I changed it infrastructure. And climate change preparation, so those are the four buckets. And as I mentioned, I took everyone's input and um. Assigned them into the appropriate bucket and um, you know, there was obviously, not surprisingly. Quite a bit of overlap between um the four inputs. So this is sort of the distilled version, um, I think everyone can see it on the screen, but um. I'll just read through them really quickly, and um, anything we wanna return to, please keep it in mind, and we'll come back to it at the end. Um, so, budget and finances, the town administrator shall oversee monthly reconciliations with, from the town accountant, town treasurer. Collector and report findings to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, implement auditors, management, letter recommendations in conjunction with the town accountant and the town treasurer collector and other department heads. So that one is a direct carryover from last year. Um, review with the Board of Selectmen a five year financial forecast for the town as well as a five year capital improvement plan. Review all revenue and fees and provide recommended changes. Ensure development of rules, regulation, and fees for temporary rentals, if the town wishes to permit such commercial establishments. Um, under communication, the town administrator shall continue to provide improved access for Nahat citizens to information. Particularly on current. Up and uh, current and upcoming town projects, including approximate scope and schedule, a dedicated projects page on the hot dot. Or website is suggested. Continue to maintain an open and transparent atmosphere and ensure that all Board of Selectmen members are informed of all important matters impacting the town. That is another carryover from last year. Maintain effective and positive communication among all board, town boards and committees. Um, general government administration. Town administrator shall make timely appointments to all boards and committees as specified in the special acts and or directed by town meeting. Maintain annual good goals and objectives for all department heads and perform annual performance evaluations. Additionally, reviews should include project updates, personnel reviews, equipment needs, and grant opportunities. Continue to provide a safe, effective, and cordial work environment for all employees, another carryover. Orally status reviews with the community uh Community Preservation Committee CPC reporting on all. Reporting on status of new completed and planned CPC projects. School Department general semi annual reviews with the superintendent, principal, and school committee chair review should include, but not. But not be limited to number of teachers, administrative staff, students, and additional personnel. Teaching needs, including teaching tool, software update, dates, and grant opportunities. Character and intellectual development of students that strengthens the reputation of the community. Develop and apply, um, number six, develop and apply for state approval of housing production plan if budget is approved. At twenty twenty two town meeting to address the affordable and elderly housing needs. Uh, and number seven, encourage public community events. In support of community event planning, there should be a web page on, uh, excuse me, with updated public land use policy, how events are. Approved and what fees are included. Number eight, negotiate union contracts for in Nahat Police Department, not Fire Department and Department of Public Works in a timely fashion. And number nine, continue and enhance Nahat's public open spaces and recreational facilities. Under infrastructure and climate change preparation, the town administrator shall. There's a little grammatical error here, but uh. Regular and consistent upgrade to the town's infrastructure while making every effort to seek out and take advantage of available grants. Consider. Uh, consider full time, number two, consider full time environmental planner. Slash grant writer with the flexibility to use this individual for other projects, number three. Create and publish a hazard mitigation plan and flood protection, five year plan, the plan shall include kickoff meeting with the Conservation Commission. And quarterly reviews with CONCOM. Plan to include but not be limited to the items listed in the climate change preparedness goals. Uh, which are coming up, I think, um, number four, prioritization of climate change preparedness projects include this. Significant progress on, and here's a list of those items. FEMA funded storm damage repair jobs, forty steps. Uh, coastal bank and beach, Willow Road revetment, short beach dune by Little Nahat. Uh, next page. Uh, Doggy Beach Dune and Revetment, entire short beach dune project, lowlands drainage projects, rec- as recommended by the engineer. Feasibility study of a seawall behind the private homes on Castle Road. Increasing the height of Tudor Beach, that's, I think that's supposed to be Tudor Beach wall, I thought. A seawall, um, compost area resiliency plan. And initiating a long term study of impacts of storms to prepare Nahat for the future. Um, that's not, that was number three with all those items, um, continue, uh, number four, continue with progress on meeting requirements of the Mass DEP consent order. For twenty twenty one. Number five, advanced award road sewer pump. Number five, advanced award road sewer pump station project, if budget is approved at twenty twenty-two town meeting. And number six, finally, install new fiber-based phone systems at public buildings. That's it. Do we have any comments on any of these goals?
Quite a few.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, I don't want to get to the point where Michael managing either. Um, I, I think all of the points that, uh, are, are important. Uh, and I'm confident that Tony will um, will work through them. Um, I didn't, I am a little, I guess I'm wondering about the, the, the goal of schools and why we're getting, and why we're getting involved in that at all, um, see if there's a separation between, you know, schools and, and town government, so. But other than that, uh, I'm, I'm fine with them.
Well, you, you know, to answer the school situation, I didn't put that in necessarily as a, a, a goal or an objective, but more of a review procedure. Because I think the schools are such an integral part of drawing people to the town. I, I know I don't know enough about what's going on up at the school and I talked to Tony about the possibility once every six months, once a year of having the superintendent principal come down, talk to us, tell us what's going on and bring us up to date. I think that's important.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I know that, I, I guess one of my only issue here, um, Gene, there is a separation. There is a school committee that's duly elected, um, that's responsible for managing and running the school depart, the school department. Um, they don't report to the town administrator. Um, I know that Tony, um, um, includes the superintendent in his, uh, department head meetings um, each month, um, they have a good working relationship. Uh, I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about, you know, yeah, and I, and I, I like your idea of inviting, um, the superintendent to, uh, um, some of our meetings to, for an update, but they have their own meetings that are, that are public also, so. I mean, anyone who's concerned with the school department can certainly join their public meetings anytime they have them. Um, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at it as a review, an overview maybe. You know, to talk about, you know, like, I think Tony or some Josh just mentioned it, we'd be talking about that the level of education providers, which we know is strong, what kind of tools they need, software, IT. The things that would, would make their job easier, but I'd also like to know how many kids are in the school. Um, staff, support staff, things of that nature, you know, one meeting, one night.
Yeah, I think, um, I, I guess I share some of the concerns with this particular goal, um, it's sort of very specific and, you know, it, it does sort of make it seem like we're trying to control, not necessarily control, but, um, I, I think, Gene, I agree that, uh, obviously the, the schools are really important to the town and the hot, that's, you know, it good schools drive real estate prices and the hunt is, uh, and the hunt is, uh, almost a hundred percent reliant on real estate tax as a, as its primary um, revenue stream, so, um, I certainly like the idea of making sure we're informed, um, as Mark pointed out, you know, we can always go to their meetings and, um, I try to listen to their meetings from time to time, but, you know, I, I don't think that's the place for me to sort of get an overview. Perhaps I can take a shot at, um, revising this a, a, as into more of a, um, in annual or semi-annual status report from the superintendent, something like that, if that's, um,
Right.
Is that an acceptable, um, this goal is really yours, Gene, um, is that an acceptable, um, way of addressing your, your objective here?
Yes, I, I, I think, I'm guessing that the superintendent principal in the school committee chair would probably like to share uh, for a half hour, an hour, some of what they're doing and we can take that in and, and, uh, thank them for.
All right, so I'll, I'll, I'll take the action to, uh, come up with revised wording, um, in that spirit and, um, I'll submit it to Tony and who, um, can distribute, um, to you all. Obviously, we can't deliberate, um, outside of a public meeting, but, um, I'll send a revised version of that particular goal to you, Tony, and we'll take it from there.
And, and hey, they, they may not want to, to, to participate in that and that, that too is okay. I don't, I don't want to be jumping into something that, that you're not going to be comfortable with.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, you know, that may, because it's still kind of awkward of it being a goal of mine. Um, but maybe the, maybe the goal that you're asking for of me is to you know, have consistent communication with all the department heads and report, you know, basic status and statistics of, you know, each of those departments up to you. You know, on an annual or biannual basis of some sort, instead of it being specific, um, items only to the school, um, it could just be a little bit more general of because I, the, when, when I read this, you know, like I said, I, I create, once these goals are established, I then create goals for the department heads that report to me. Um, you know, I don't create goals for the clerk or for the assessor or for the librarian. Um, but I create goals for the accountant, the treasurer, the, you know, police chief, fire chief, DPW superintendent. Because those other ones are, you know, while we have a, a great working relationship and there is, you know, constant communication, which is important for the overall good of the community. It's, it's awkward, um, because they don't technically report to me, um, so.
I, I'm not going to argue it, I, I'm, I'm just basically saying it was, but maybe, uh, uh, maybe I framed it incorrectly, but it's just looking for a review.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, maybe the, maybe my, my suggestion is maybe it's more of just a, a goal of the town administrator to provide an annual review, um, to the board of selectmen of the different departments, you know, throughout the town. And then I can work with those department heads to provide me that information and, and or invite them to a board of selectmen meeting.
I think that.
We're due for that anyhow, aren't we? With the department heads?
Uh, no, uh, well, I mean, that we, you had talked in the past about wanting to, you know, meet directly with the department heads and set goals for them, but that's my, that's my role as town administrator. Um, but for like the school department, for the assessors, for the clerk, for the librarian, those department heads who don't report to me, um, you know, could be invited to join a board of selectmen meeting and report to you, you know, things that are within their, in their, within their department.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, um, I'll reword it in, into a fashion. Um, so that is an action, an action for you, Tony, as a town administrator, and send that off to you.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um, on number six below this, um, develop and apply for state approval of a housing production plan if the budget is approved at annual town meeting, uh, to address affordable and elderly housing needs. Um, I know that the article um, does not reach that quite that far, um, it gets that process started. So I wrote it this way with that knowledge, but, um, I'll explain my logic and feel free to object, any of you. So I wanted to set the bar high, higher than the article, uh, um, because I'd rather have you get a ninety on a high bar than a hundred on a low bar. So I'm not sure if that's really fair, but that was my, uh, that was my logic.
The reason the, the language is written that way is, it's, it's not that um, a housing production plan is a higher bar than other items that we would, you know, other uh, a, you know, some other document referred to as a plan with its goal of producing housing needs identified by our community. The reason it's written that way and the reason I, I had responded to the draft of this with my comment is that when we spoke with MAPC and we spoke with DHCD, the ho- the term housing production plan is a defined term by statute and it's very specific. It's specifically a plan that a community would seek approval for from the state to use to potentially provide temporary safe harbor against unfriendly forty B. Um, not really always, uh, there are elements of that plan that um, will help, uh, help direct a community towards achieving certain, certain housing goals. Um, so the latter actually, you know, in my opinion, might even be a higher bar if you put it that way, because even if we, our first step is to kind of assess where the town is with our chapter forty B requirements. If we meet those requirements, a housing production plan isn't necessary because we have by meeting those requirements, we are not subject to a potential unfriendly forty B development. However, we still have significant housing needs as identified by the board of selectmen and I'm sure a public process that we're going to seek to, um, proceed, so there are I'll, elements of a housing production plan that we may still try to go after and still try to accomplish, even though we don't need a, a you know, DHCD-approved housing production plan. So it's not, it's, it's actually just because of the way that MAPC explained it to us and how it's defined, it's a defined term. I think the language here and the goal is fine and it works fine, um, but I, when I read it, I wanted to make that point so that we all understood, you know, what the um, you know, what we're going to hopefully accomplish over the next year.
Yeah, so, um, with that in mind, I can, I can work with you on, um, uh, potentially editing this, this goal, um, but I think you get, I think you get the idea, this is, uh, I think we all agree that, um, addressing affordable housing and elderly housing in the hot and protecting the community from forty B, an unfriendly forty B, um, development is a high priority and I want to keep our foot on the gas pedal on this and, and not, um, not drag our feet, that's, that's been going on for, you know, we've, we've been you know, remiss in, uh, um, aggressively addressing this, um, you know, for since two thousand eight when it became a law, so, um, I, I, you know, it's time to really make some progress here. But, um, I'll get together with you, Tony, and, um, we'll see if this will need to any, um, revision.
I agree. Tony, um, speaking of housing, have we heard anything back from the MBTA or stayed on the, uh, the housing situation?
No, they have not released any, uh, second draft since they've received our comments or, you know, I, I think they got a lot of comments from a lot of communities.
I would think.
Um, uh, goal number four, under infrastructure and climate change, change preparation, there's a lot, there's a long list there. You comfortable with that list, Tony and, and, um, Gene and Mark?
I've been on, so every two weeks I'm on a call with FEMA. Um, and then every month I'm on a call with CZM and DEP and um, you know, our engineer and project manager on those calls too. And, you know, our, we're going full force on trying to make progress on those FEMA-funded storm damage repair jobs, which, um, I guess your list is a in, in ways repetitive, but not because, like, for instance, a FEMA-funded storm damage repair job is the forty steps coastal bank. However, DEP and CZM won't permit just the repair job, they want us to go beyond that and do some mitigation. So it's, they're kind of the same thing, but extended version of it, maybe the way, um, you know, I, I'm I, and we're, we're for the Willow, for forty steps and for Doggy Beach. Um, we're going to be going through a chapter ninety licensing process, which could take, you know, uh, months. And for many of these projects, we're going to have to go through MIPA permitting, which could, which would take many, many months. So it's possible that we're not into construction a year from now, but even that, having those permitted, um, having those designs permitted or well through the process of permitting is significant progress, so I'm okay, I'm okay with the way this is listed.
Right, yeah, I just wanted to point that out, that's, that's, you know, certainly that's recognized that some of these things take a long time, even if we don't want them to, so that's why, um, the sort of, oh, I'm trying not to say weasel word of significant progress is in there, but I mean, that's, that's what it means. It doesn't mean these things necessarily will be completed in twenty twenty-two, but uh, we want to see measurable progress on all these, all these items, and I think that, you know, most of these items actually came from you, Tony, so, um, and I did break out the FEMA-funded storm damage repair jobs from the ones that you just pointed out are included in that, um, in part because people might not know that, for example, the forty steps coastal bank and beach are part of that, so I listed that as kind of a a line and for, for clarity, yeah.
Yeah, I, I this is definitely these jobs were, you know, probably at the top of the priority list for the town prior to, you know, COVID kind of taking over our main focus into public health. Um, now that we're kind of turning the page, um, you know, these definitely need to be brought back to the forefront and need to be spent a lot of time on so we can make progress, so.
Would you mind sharing the next page just for a moment for anybody that's on Zoom and so the rest of us? Yeah, so a few more or several, quite a few more items there, um. Doggy Beach, ensure entire Short Beach Dune, Lowlands Drainage, feasibility of a sea wall behind the private homes on Castle Road, that's a interesting new concept that's come up, so that.
I mean, it may not be a seawall per se, it may be, you know, some sort of soft structure, we'll see what the state regulatory officials, you know, are, allow us to look forward, look towards, but
Yeah.
Some, some type of, uh, storm surge prevention, you know, infrastructure in that area would be very helpful um, to the Lowlands neighborhood and, you know, the sewer pump station and the national grid substation.
Yeah, be, be interesting to find out how those breakwaters over in Winthrop work, have worked out for the town of Winthrop. That would be.
Worked out very well for the beach stand there, I can tell you that. It hasn't worked out very well for the, uh, for the Winthrop beach.
No.
But, uh, you know, I was a member of the Metropolitan Beaches Commission for a number of years and, uh, I spent a lot of time taking a look at, um, you know, improving, uh, metropolitan beaches and whatever those sort of, uh, breakwaters were, were put in, it just devastated the beaches. I mean, it's probably protected in. I mean, it's probably protected in some, uh, storm surge. But you can't keep sand in those beaches any longer because of that.
Yeah, what, what's it scour?
Yeah, it's, it's just a mess. I'm not interested in those things at all, to be honest with you.
But, uh, the other, the other.
The last one there, K, Initiative Long Term Study of Impacts. That one is of particular interest to me. Um, I think that that's something, you know, we've already kind of started. Um, exploring with different firms, um, consulting firms and seeing what's. What's out there, but essentially what we're looking to do there is. Um, cross-reference data from recent storms. Um, and future storms to the damage that occurs all around the heart. And so what that would help us do in the long term is that when we have, you know, a certain type of storm. Coming from a certain, you know, wind direction and storm surge hitting at a certain high tide and. You know, all these different data points could actually help identify our most vulnerable areas in town for that storm. It helps with preparing, um, you know, neighborhoods for those impacts. And then long-term range helps us prioritize all of these other items that you have listed there. Because if, uh, you know, if, if a certain type of storm is the most common type of storm and it produces a certain type of damage, it might move. Uh, in a certain point, in a certain area of town, it might move that up the list in the priorities, you know, so. That's, that's an interesting, more, I guess, like qualitative analysis. Um, that doesn't produce, you know, a, a dune or a wall, but it gives us data and information that helps us. You know, plan for the future. So that's, that one's, that's a cool one that I'm, I'm glad made it on the list.
Good one.
Yeah, if you think your list is too short, Tony, let, let us know. Can you add anything? No, I, this is, uh, this is an ambitious, um, set of goals and I, I, um. I'm really glad we, um, implemented this process starting last year. I think, um. It helped, um. You know, it helped us, um, you know, keep our eyes on the prize, so to speak, on, on these items last year and, uh. Hoping the same thing with this coming year. So. You'll have a busy year ahead.
It helps, it helps move things along.
Tony, I, I, one of the ones I put in, I'm particularly interested in is the monthly reconciliation report from the accountant and the treasurer. Uh, it gives me a good snapshot about where we stand each month, uh, with our revenues and our, and our expenditures. Uh, and, and, you know, we don't need to review it every month, but it's just. Like, we can get a copy of that every month. It's, I, I just find it very useful.
Ab- absolutely. And even, uh, so that's something that we can start doing right away, but even better. Once, uh, once Munis is implemented in a, in about a year. Each of you would have a login account that you could, you could log in and, you know, get as deep into the weeds as you were wanting to.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
What's, what's the timing on that, Tony?
Probably about a year. Um, you know, we don't have. They usually say like, uh, four to, four to eight months, but that's when you have like a ton of staff that you can put on the project. Where we don't really have that. Um, it's probably going to take a little bit longer. So after town meeting, we've already gone through the procurement process. Munis was the. Uh, selected bidder. Uh, so it's just an implementation process now that, you know, could take anywhere from eight to twelve months.
Uh, okay, so, um, I'll, um, I'll work on the, the wording of, of the two. Goals we discussed with you, Tony, and, um. And then we can approve the goals at the next, um, the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Great. All right, that's the plan. Um, next item on the agenda is, uh, to approve employment contracts for the, the fire chief, the police chief. And the DPW superintendent. Um, we have separate motions for each of those contracts. Anyone available to read those motions?
Someone, yeah, I'm looking for them.
I can start with the, the first one if you want. Um, I moved the board of. I'll go ahead. Um, I'll do the first one. Um, I moved that the board of select and vote to approve the employment contract for Nahat. Police Chief Timothy Furlong as presented with a term date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Um, I read through the contract and, uh, I, looks good to me. I have no suggested changes.
It, uh, uh, you know, I haven't looked at the revision, um, since the last time that you suggested, Josh, that we. Uh, make sure that the contracts are consistent with our employee handbook. Uh, so that's been done.
Yeah, and they're consistent across the three contracts in terms of the, the wording.
That was a great pick up. That, that's good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none, roll call vote.
Gene, can't the eye?
My color light.
Josh, enter mine. Uh, next motion.
I moved that the board of selectmen vote to approve the employment contract for the hot fire chief Austin Antrim. As presented with a term date of June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded. Yeah, one or two seconded. Um, discussion, um. Since Austin Antrim is my nephew, I will abstain from this vote.
Uh, my only, um. Um, suggestion is I wish it could be longer, but, uh, um. Uh, I'm, I'm glad I'm approving. I'm, I'm going to vote to approve this contract.
Oh, okay. Gene can't the eye?
My color light.
Okay, next motion for the superintendent. I moved that the board of select and vote to approve the employment contract for Nahat. Department of Public Works Superintendent Zachary Taylor as presented with a term of July first, twenty twenty-two. To June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So.
Seconded.
Seconded, um, discussion, any discussion?
The, the only problem with having all of these on contracts expire at the same time, Tony, you could have a revolt on your hands.
Well, there's a dear, there's a year difference, uh.
Zach, yes, Zach. Zach is one year difference.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Zach's doing a great job.
Yeah, doing an outstanding job and, um. So we're the chief furlong and chief Antrim. We're lucky to have, uh, Zach Taylor as well. Uh, any further discussion on this contract? Um, hearing, seeing none, roll call vote.
Gene, can't the eye?
My color light.
Josh, enter mine.
I want to thank you. Uh, if I can, I would like to thank you, the board, for supporting all three of those contracts. Uh, as you mentioned, you know, Zach is, um, he's in his final year of his initial three-year contract. He's going to be going into his second three-year contract. Um, the, uh, chief furlong and chief Antrim, um, are in their first year of their. Each of their first three-year contracts that you just approved. Um, and I'll just say that, you know, the town is extremely lucky to have all three of them. Uh, you know, chief furlong, um. You know, picking up right where chief Dwyer left off and doing a phenomenal job. Um, chief Antrim, again, you know, another phenomenal hire for our town. Um, resident here and, you know. Really like lives and breeds the fire department and Zach Taylor, you know, a former resident of the town, but. Um, you know, again, all three of these gentlemen. Uh, go beyond, you know, the call of duty for their respective departments and I just. You know, the town's really lucky to have them. So thank you for supporting those contracts.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been amazing how smoothly the transition has gone, you know. Um, with these people retiring, you, um, these, um, you know, the, uh. Police chief and, and Chief Plumbo and, um, also, you know. Debbie Waters, uh, transitioned to Allison. It's been amazing how. Um. You know, the, the transition has been so smooth. So, um, really happy about that.
Yeah, we have, we have a great team. Everybody works together. Um, you know, those department meetings we do twice a month and it's always, it's always a, uh, enjoyable. Hour, um, I'm sure, you know, uh, many of them are. You know, eager to move on and get back to their day-to-day tasks at the end of those meetings, but. Um, they're great, you know, everybody's kind of like finishing each other's sentences and being helpful to one another. There's no problem that somebody hasn't, um, come across in their, in the past or knows something. Um, or someone that could be helpful. So everything's, uh, I, I really am proud of the team that we have here and. Like I said, you know, the, for the town and a half, for the residents of the town. Um, we're extremely lucky to have the, all the talent that we have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, as a, as a town resident, and I don't, not speaking as a. Selectman, but just as a town resident, I'm just really grateful for, um, our town employees too.
What's important here, I think, too, Josh, it shouldn't be overlooked, is that, you know, you mentioned some of the, um, the, the people who retired who were. Who are also great, but, um, you know, this is Tony's team, um, now. You know, and Tony, you're the quarterback here and you picked a great team and, um. Um, they support you, you support them, um, and it's well-oiled and. I think you'll have a bright future ahead of you and the town will too.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, next item on the, on the agenda is preserving East Point. Um, I don't have anything new to report there. Um, we had a good report out by attorney Blake, um, a few weeks back and, um. I don't have anything new to add. I don't know, uh, Gene or Mark, if you had anything or Tony?
Just that, um, um, on East Point, I know we have a, uh, sort of a May Day type of event that's been.
Oh, yeah.
Fundated by, uh, Jim Walsh and a few, I know he's been working with, with Zach and Tony on this, so, uh. I think that's May fourteenth, is it, Tony?
Yes. Yeah, there's nine thirty to one thirty is a, um, arts and crafts. Type of fair, uh, down at, uh, across from Canoe Beach at the Memorial Park. And then, uh, in the afternoon, there is, um, I think music and, um, dancing event at the top. Um, of East Point.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun last year. Hope everybody makes it up there. Yeah, fun of that. Um, all right, next on the agenda is town administrator's report.
Um, so for town meeting info sessions in preparation, I just wanted to publicly announce that. I'll be hosting two info sessions, uh, prior to town meeting for anybody that is interested in. Um, attending, asking questions about the articles. Uh, it's really a, um, an opportunity for residents to. Um, get familiar with what's going to be discussed at town meeting and, um, you know, answer any questions ahead of time. Uh, that anybody might have. So we'll be, I'll be hosting those on, um. The next Wednesday, the eleventh, um, at six thirty PM. And then Monday, the sixteenth, at six thirty PM. And I'll probably do those in a hybrid fashion. So if anyone's interested in coming to the town hall and doing more of a, a in-person. Format, uh, you're welcome to, to join me and one of the, it'll be in one of the conference rooms downstairs. And I'll zoom that meeting so it's, uh, available for people that want to follow online. Um, and so I will put those on the community calendar.
Um, are you still doing one at the Village Church?
Uh, this Friday at, um, eight AM, the Village Church Community Breakfast. Monthly community breakfast, uh, starts back up and I'm lucky to be the, the first speaker. Uh, so at eight AM, um, at the Village Church, I will be there and, and presenting. There'll be more of a high level, uh, you know, at eight in the morning. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds. Uh, 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 for folks there enjoying their breakfast, but it'd be more of a high-level overview of. The budget and the town meeting and the process. Um, but there's, those other info sessions on Wednesday, the eleventh and Monday, the sixteenth. Are more informal and opportunity for people to, you know, more of a back and forth event if there's any questions about. Some of the articles that are on the board.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity for people to, um, satisfy their curiosity about what's going to happen at town meeting and, um. Get some, get some questions answered ahead of time, which helps town meeting, um, move smoothly. So. I definitely encourage anybody, um, listening to attend one of the Tony sessions.
Um, also, the. Finance Committee, uh, report recommendations of the, of the Advisory and Finance Committee, uh, book has been printed. Uh, these are going into the mail tomorrow, so you'll be receiving your copy, um, by next week. Uh, I also wanted to. Um. Share my screen for a minute. This webpage is about, it will probably go public either tomorrow or Friday, but we created a. Make sure it pulls up, okay? Share my screen. A lot of questions that, I think a lot of questions we get in the town hall is, is about process as well. And really understanding, you know, how we get to this point in time is. Is part of the, you know, the informational session that I, that I talked about. So we created this. Annual town meeting page on our website that it's not public yet, but we're, we're basically walking through it. To try to show people what the process kind of looks like. So in chronological order. Um, you know, the first step of the process is the citizens and committee petitions. Um, and here in this box here, you can see it talks a little bit about that. Um, the deadline being the thirty-first for the town charter. Uh, you can click on the citizen petition and it'll pull up a blank form for you. And then here is a list of any citizen petitions that we received this year for the upcoming town meeting. If you click here, it'll bring you to that. Citizen's petition. Um, and then there's a few, you know, other pieces of information here. The next real step of the process is the Community Preservation Act, which they have their own page on our website, but. It's part of this process, so we wanted it to be featured. Um, and so you can, from here, you could actually click over to view the C, the CPA. Uh, you could click to download a copy of the application, although the deadline has passed at this point. Um, but this, you know, next year will be up. This will carry over to next year so people can see this early on. Um, and then there'll be a comprehensive list of applications. It'll be on the CPC page that you can get to from here. While the CPC does their work, the Board of Selectmen, um, are producing the first version of the omnibus budget. And then we submit it to the Advisory and Finance Committee and that budget might change as we go through the process. So as we do that. You know, in the upcoming year, we can actually post the different versions of that here on this site. So people can follow along when those changes are made. Um. Also, the, I think it kind of gets lost. That the omnibus budget voted on at town meeting is actually the finance committee's budget. You know, so even though the Board of Selectmen and I work together, we put together a draft, we send it to the finance committee. It's actually their budget that gets voted on under the omnibus article. However, it's the Board of Selectmen's. Uh, warrant. So the Board of Selectmen control what articles are featured on the warrant. Um, and the same thing, we changed that throughout the process, we. And the same thing, we changed that throughout the process. We add new articles, we change language, we change the order in which they appear on the warrant. And so that gets posted here as, that would get posted here as well. The final version of both are available here, but like I said, in the upcoming year, next year, you actually have different versions available to you. So you can see how they changed over time. And then the Advisory and Finance Committee are working kind of simultaneously with the Board of Selectmen and the CPA or their Community Preservation Committee. And they're taking our draft of the omnibus budget, developing their own. They're looking at, at the Board of Selectmen's warrant, publishing their, you know, drafting their recommendations and publishing their final report. So this, like I said, you know, the, the, the report recommendation hard copy may not get to your mailbox but until next week, but as soon as this goes live, you could actually download a copy of it and take a look at it. Here's the final version right there. And then the info sessions that I'm going to be doing, you know, if it's related to, these are just examples, we're, we're trying to finalize this, but you know, for one, Article 28, there's the Stormwater Bylaw Amendment. So up here, we kind of add this. These are kind of like what would be in the appendix version of the hard copy of the ThinkCom books will be available here. So any type of PowerPoints or, you know, reports or studies or backup info, we'd have here on this page. And then there's some general information down here at the bottom about when you register for town meeting. So we're a little behind schedule on this where this year, the version of, once this goes live, you're just going to see the final versions of a lot of things. But now have this created so that in the future, it's a more interactive webpage, you know, for the, for the process of developing the budget and the warrant for town meeting.
That is phenomenal. I guess, thanks for showing that to us. That is really great tool, Tony.
Yeah, it's something we've been talking about for, for a while, but now with the new website, we have, these are things that we have like the capability of doing. So unfortunately, you know, we've just been so busy focused on the actual work related to town meeting. This kind of is coming at the tail end, but once it's built, it can be used proactively in the future. So.
Yeah, no, that's a great tool for the citizens and, you know, to console you, you know, people probably aren't going to be looking at it too much in October and November. It's really as county approaches when they're going to want to use that, utilize that page the most. So that's really great.
Yeah. And also helpful for, it's helpful for the seat, for the members of the Community Preservation Committee, for the Finance Committee, for the Board of Select, like for the department heads, you know, a, a one-stop spot for anybody to go and see what's the latest thing that the Board of Selectmen voted on. You know, is, it, it speeds up the process. It's helpful, not just for residents paying attention, but for the people that are actually working on this stuff. It's a quicker way to disperse info too. So. Fourth of July festivities. So my announcement tonight is, you know, a good, good news, bad news type of situation. You know, unfortunately fireworks and firework contractors, after the last two years, suffered pretty hard with communities not hosting Fourth of July. And so they weren't able to, some didn't survive and, you know, and then plus the supply chain issue and, and hauling costs increasing, it's made it very difficult to find contractors to perform the fireworks for you. So unfortunately for the town in a hot, our firework vendor and was, is not able to come and do fireworks on the Fourth of July this year. And we called, you know, a ton of other firework vendors to try to find someone. But like I said, there's really not a lot out there and everybody was booked up extra early. However, at that we were able to secure them for the ninth, Saturday following Fourth of July. So Fourth of July is on a Monday. So the Saturday following is when the town in a hot will have its Fourth of July fireworks. So on the plot, on the good news side is it's a Saturday instead of a Monday night. So a little bit more enjoyable for the residents. It kind of extends the celebration of Independence Day over a week, you know, with Swamp Scott and Lynn having fireworks on the Sunday night prior for the third of July. And we are trying to explore some vendors to see if they'd be willing to come to the town on the night of those fireworks to kind of enhance the experience of the show and leading up to it. So more to come on that, on that portion of it, but that is our, that's my Fourth of July announcement.
So are fireworks officially booked for the, for the ninth?
Great.
Yes. I think that's going to be great, especially, I know you have some additional plans that you're thinking about, maybe not quite ready for public consumption yet, but I think it sounds pretty exciting. And then what about the Flash Road activities on the fourth?
Also, I need, I got to connect with the Fourth of July Committee that, you know, put, put together the races. Those might still be the morning of the Fourth of July. We might maintain that and still do the horrible parade the night before. It would just be that the fireworks show wouldn't happen until the Saturday following. But I'll confirm that and, but that's the direction we're kind of heading in right now.
All right. Are you able to say? I was just going to ask if you are able to give us a, off the top of your head, update on the sewer main on the Linway, if you're done with the Fourth of July. Could you have?
I have a, my two-week progress update meeting is tomorrow morning. The, the, the Linway Forest Main Project really has moved mostly to night work because of traffic concerns on the Linway. They're still making significant progress, even though work has been shifted to nighttime. Substantial completion should be in June. So we're, we're making progress. I, I'd like to actually, it, over the next week or two before town meeting, you know, put out like a blog post or a press release of some sort with some updated information about the current progress of the current project and, you know, kind of tease the article for funding for future projects.
Sounds good.
The other thing I was going to mention was, this past weekend was opening day for the Little League and you know, the, the folks, that's a real, that's a very big volunteer effort. And the, the Kendralette, Christian Bauda, the, you know, dozens of coaches, fathers, mothers, you know, that volunteer their time to help clean up the field and be part of that process. And Zach and the DPW and G and J Towing actually helped us install a flagpole behind the, the field, the, the major league field, the little league field up, up top there looks phenomenal. It's the best it's looked in years and, and new backstop was improved, installed this past year because of CPC funding. So it looks really, really good. So I just wanted to thank, you know, DPW, G and J Towing and all the volunteers that are involved with the Little League. It, it looks awesome down there and I, I think they had a great opening day on Saturday.
Hey, Tony, while you're on there, what's, what's the update on the Flash Road Park?
The, the basketball court?
Yeah.
So we are, we've presented the alternative, the proposed change order to the contractor for the, the petition we received about installing pickleball courts. And we're just kind of waiting on making a decision about how much that's going to cost and how we would fund it and what the process would be to find that funding. It's very possible that it comes up at town meeting as a transfer article of current fiscal year funds. But that's something that, you know, I'm working closely with the, I guess, the primary contacts of that group of 200 residents that signed the petition and working with them on, you know, what, what process to kind of go through. I believe they started a private fundraising effort to show support and to potentially match town funds for whatever the cost of the change order would be. But the goal would be to have that, you know, have that project completed this summer before Park League starts, which I think is mid-July. Yeah.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, Tony?
No.
All right, next item is Citizens Forum. So if anyone has any questions or comments on the Zoom call here, you may unmute yourself and state your name and address.
In the chat, Diane Monteith had mentioned while we were going through the town administrator goals. Diane, do you want to unmute and mention it? Would you want me to read for you?
Sure, I'll just thank you very much. First of all, thank you for saving Fourth of July fireworks. You had me worried there for a second. The good news and bad news. Yes, our traditions are wonderful in this town. And Memorial Day Parade is another one that I'm looking forward to. But I, I was asking the question if we could have a progress report on the Green Communities Program Projects, not this meeting of course, but in the future. Just because I know you've done so much, Tony's running with this with the consultants. And as you know, we did convert the, the streetlights successfully. So I'm hoping to see an, an analysis of this energy savings on that. And some, you know, other citizens have asked for that as well. And then the other thing is, could you give us an update, Tony, on any other projects that we have scheduled? I know we said municipal building LED lighting conversions. And then I'm very curious about the school roof solar project that we get so close to, but not there. And any other future projects that you have scheduled, please, because sizable grants and reduced expenses are what it's all about. So, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you, Diane, and thank you for all your help and leadership in that, you know, setting up that energy reduction planning and helping the town become a green community. As you mentioned, we did use our designation grant to purchase our streetlights and convert them to LEDs. That project's complete. We have, then we secured our competitive grant after that project, after the designation grant was completed. We secured a second grant through the competitive grant process to convert all interior lighting in our municipal buildings. Phase one at the school and all the interior lighting in the other public buildings. And that project is complete. And now we're applying for our second competitive grant to do phase two at the school. Some heat source, some air source heat pumps at the fire station, the DPW and a couple other elements that were identified in the plan that you had helped put together. So we, I think we just submitted that application. So we don't, we haven't heard back yet, but, and I don't have exact data on how much energy we've saved so far or reduced consumption, you know, since those other projects have been completed. But I can try to find that for you.
Great, thank you.
And the solar project, basically we hit, we hit a major roadblock where National Grid essentially was saying that our substation at Wood Road may not be able to handle that size of a solar project. And to move forward, there'd have to be some, you know, like at the expense of the town, a significant engineering study on the substation and what type of improvements would have to be made. And then if any improvements needed to be made, that would have to be on the towns, at the towns' cost as well. So we kind of hit a roadblock with that. The, I think the study was going to cost somewhere around like 10 or 12 grand. So something that, you know, we might do in the future to see what the substation may or may not need in order for us to pursue solar at the school. Because it would be such a huge project for us, so many benefits. But the result of that study could be, you know, very minimal dollars to upgrade the substation or it could be, you know, like a significant amount of investment that would basically make the solar project not worth, you know, not worth itself. So that's where we are with that. We're kind of at a roadblock at the moment.
Okay.
All right, anybody else in Citizens Forum? All right, if that's it, then we are going to adjourn into executive session and won't be returning to open session. Do we have a motion on that? All right, I think, I think maybe I should read the whole motion. And who did the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy as to impending litigation against HUD regarding nine little hot road? And B, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph Six, to consider the value of nine little hot road if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and will not be returning into open meeting. And I do declare that open meeting would have a detrimental, may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position. Anyone want a second back?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jean Cathy, I.
Mark, all right.
Josh Andrew, my, thank you everyone and good night.
There you go.
Looks like Ellen has abandoned her computer. So maybe I'll go over there.
I can remove.
Okay.